Friends and friends from the Lewis Board of Public Works, Mr. Thomas Panetta, Chairman, and Mr. Press, the, as the, uh, board member or you want to be secretary, either one way. Former Chairman. So, both are here in, I guess, I don't know, support, or, because we don't make, we will not make a decision, this is not a county council decision, it will only become a county council follow-up if the board chooses to pursue one of the two options which is associated with us in a further extended partnership. So, so the presentation will have four, four pieces. I want to sort of give you the background that's very important, the options which we, which the board will consider as the approval. It has the development for each one of the options, so there's slides for each one. And then there's a summary of the concept evaluation, and then there's the next steps, and these are next steps include board steps as well as potential county council steps. So, when you look at the, I wanted to give you a little bit of a feedback, so, as a matter of fact, within day, I have been here seven years, it's hard to believe, and Mr. Lawson did not believe I was going to hang around that long, but, so, so the, in 2016, as our first partner was Lewis Board of Public Works, came on, came on board between the two of us, the two entities, I should say, and we had the first waste water agreement, we've amended it several times since, expanded it, it's quite flexible, both parties are very happy with the agreement. Give you a little bit more, in recent history, just a few weeks, a few months ago, the county council, the board started under Chairman Lee's chairmanship to have hold a public workshop, which sort of kicked off this whole long-range study, and that was on March 31st of this year. You have seen it in, on May 24th, when council agreed to co-fund this particular study, because at that point then we included options which pertain to the county, and that was the option three series. And sort of in-between fell this timeline, which is very important, where the, the board, the county council looked at the ARPA funding availability and made some decisions on how you want to break it down, worked with the finance director on this, and the engineering. You committed to a significant portion of the, of the county's ARPA funds to move into various sewer projects, and this would be one of them, if we end up with shared facilities. That's another very important step on this, and I'll touch base on that fact later on in the cost allocations. So, our joint consultant, GHD, was then tasked with the, preparing the long-range study and report. Now, that is a, that is a very detailed report, you have it in your documents, and hopefully you read the summary, I do not expect you to read the whole thing, but it has some very rigorous background for the subsidence as well as sea level rise, which directly affects the Lewis facility, which is in the floodplain. So, and that sort of triggers this whole thing, and you'll see that back on the evaluations later on down the line. So, this particular presentation is not yet on the county council's agenda, because we wanted to have the presentation first, and then later on, we will put it up there. So, anybody who wants to see the full report, they can find it on the Board of Public Works website, as well as our website on the today's packet. So, anybody listening in remotely certainly can see that document in its full, full length. Any questions on how we got here? No, okay. These are the options which were considered, so initially, the, this was obviously, this was triggered it, and Mr. Panetta was involved in the, what was the name of that committee you were chairing?
The sea level rise.
Thank you. So, that what triggered this, hey, we need to look at the treatment, at the facility, the facility's at risk. So, option one was always in the picture because of, of the chairman's work on the previous city committee, it's a city committee. And the second one, when, under Chairman Lee's chairmanship, he looked at these options 2A, 2B, and 2C, and I'll explain to you when we, when we go through them. These are like a, a, both Board of Public Works facility located to higher ground with various disposal options. With the cooperation with the partnership, potential partnership expansion, we added the two options in the three series, and then we have slides for them as well. So, here you see, that's the summary slide, we'll have the overview slides. Now, this one here is sort of interesting in this standpoint, you may want to see, what does the, what does the board plan on doing to keep our partnership alive until 2050? So, here are the steps, what they intend to do, you see the upgrades required to the facility, you see the, the dike and the, and the sheet wall structure, there's stormwater pumping, the groundwater pumping, et cetera. So, these are all things which had some lively discussions on the board side, but it's really not of, let's say, great technical interest to you as the county council, because it doesn't affect us other than, we do have an agreement with, with the, with the board. The board provides services for us, and these are wastewater treatment and disposal services, and with these improvements, which are, strangely enough, they're, they're improvements which do not speak to the capacity of the facility. So, we love for the board to make these, but we do not participate in them directly based on our agreement. But we're very interested, should that option be selected, we would be very happy that our, let's say, relationship has a long future, i.e. until 2050.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Any, any time, please.
Project lifecycle cost, I saw the, whoever did the report put a lot of weight in that, that calculation. In layman's terms, what does that mean, the, the cost of the money over the, over the time of the project, or?
It's the, it's the combination of the costs for the capital side, the operation and maintenance side through the analysis period, which we happen to pick 2050, because that coincides with the sea level analysis.
And the bulkhead project scored low on that, did it not?
The, this project, I'll get into the evaluations, yeah, we have a slide for that.
Okay.
So, just give you a quick overview of what the various improvements packages are for the concept evaluations on the two series. So, that means, the treatment facility moves to higher ground, it's a complete new project, wastewater has to be transferred there, and the, in this particular case, which is a spray irrigation facility, you can see the land use is intense, we're looking at several hundred acres. The cost analysis was performed based on several potential sites, and then averaged together. So, that's why this one does not have a, let's say, go-to site, this is what we analyzed, no, several sites were analyzed, averages were used, and that's what used for the, for the valuation on the cost side. Now, very interesting to note, and that was not mentioned at the Board of Public Works presentation, because that is not relevant to them, but that particular option includes the county's contractual flows. So, whatever contract we have today would sort of move with it onto this site. Now, so that's important to note, because that, that essentially is, you want to know, does our agreement survive? Should the Board of Public Works pick option 2A, the answer is yes. And again, this one here, all the two series have that same thing, because remember, all the two series relocate the facility, this means our flow, our agreement moves with it, and we have really no, let's say, horse in the race of what the board decides on which option on the two series they would elect. Now, there's a small caveat to this, we as a group reviewing the scope have excluded from the analysis, and that is, the agreement also says, the county council has the opportunity to participate in any upgrade, capital upgrade project at the Board of Public Works with our own money, 100%, if you want to increase, for example, these are all options were analyzed at the long-term 50 or 2050 need of the board, which is i.e. the flow is established, 1.75, but if you, as the council, came along and said, please build a 2.0 treatment facility, we would have that opportunity, and it would be paid for exclusively by us. Now, this was not analyzed, because that would have added a completely new complexity to it, in the sense that the cost would have shifted around, and just for comparison purposes, the board wanted to keep it apples to apples. But I want you to, we are not left out in the cold, should the two series be selected. So, it's not a, you know, it's, it would trigger further action down the road.
Right.
So, this one here is the one with the, where the flow goes back to the outfall. So, we build a new facility, new site, everything goes to the site, everything comes back to the outfall. The option three is probably the most technically challenging, and that would be going out to the ocean, and I will try my bad humor again, but it's not nearly as funny after yesterday. So, we always were, I was kidding around, the outfall would have to be built before the restaurant, but, but, but obviously, since the restaurant's off the table, so, you know, the, the job's a little stale. But, so this would be the most expensive and the most challenging option. So, these three series, you probably want to hear a little bit more about the three series, and the key thing here is, you remember, we talked about the handshake point. The handshake point of responsibility is financially, is established in the agreement, and that particular handshake point is right there at the canal, where the canal is at, right there. So, we are, like, we're, we're currently discharging into the gravity system of the Lewis Board of Public Works. That is the agreed-upon financial and physical handshake point of our responsibility. So, as you heard me say before, I always use the word including the county contractual flows in the two series. This one is just the opposite, it's excluding, because now our flows normally, under the two series, originate from here, travel backwards, and discharge here. Now that it comes the other way, we will re, we will restructure this, and our flows will now be combined here. So, in essence, we would build a replacement line, exactly the same pipe we have, which is currently a six-inch and eight-inch pipe, we would, we could rebuild this one in a larger, larger pipe, and then we would join our flows, which are all collected at the Wolf Point Pump Station, and pump it into here, we would use an existing pipe to get it to here, we use existing pipes to get it to the treatment plant, and then we would build a new pipe to get it back. And then there's three options on how to get it further, and you saw that, you may have seen that in the, in the report, but, so if 3A is elected, first by the board, then by us, then we would go back to GHD, and that's in the next steps on how, how we would analyze that further. But, before I jump off that, there's obviously a number of steps involved, where we have to build a treatment plant at Wolf Neck, that's what we conceptually discussed when we discussed the ARPA funds. So, the next slide, which led us to, and that, I added that in since we had the presentation a few days ago, and I want to make sure that we are 100% clear on what we're discussing, and that is, that speaks to the questions asked at the board meeting by the board members, and I want to sort of preempt the, the questions and make sure we understand how this all works. So, this is a two slide, I initially had them on one slide, but they got too small, so I have to toggle back and forth between the two, and I really don't know how to get back, to tell you the truth. Let's see whether that gets me back here. Yes, good, okay. Had to double check. So, let me go back forward and start with bullet number one. What you see on the previous slide are values, they correspond to average concentrations and average daily flows. And when you look at this, you see here, that is the total waste load allocation into the canal on a daily basis on the permit level. So, that's existing conditions, existing permit today. This little number up here is what it, if you calculate it backward based on the design flow, that's what the concentration would be in pounds per million or milligrams per liter. So, and that's an interesting reference point. The second one here is actual plant performance for one year, and that results in an average daily flow of just about a little bit less than a million point nine MGD, and the resulting waste load is 40 pounds plus, and his resulting concentration is 5.6. So, fast forward to 2050. Yellow line on the left is the 2050 design flows, now we would be operating at a joint facility capacity of 3.5 MGD, but we're committed to still meet the same waste load allocations. That means we would be operating at a minimum of a 3.4 concentration on the waste outflow. So, as you can see, the treatment plant we're proposing, and that sort of cuts to the heart of the question for us from last week, the facility would be operating at a better border quality than would be, what the board operates today, but it would distribute more pounds, because you sheer, have a sheer volume, which is obviously higher, contributing more pounds, however, it would be below the current, today, waste load allocation. So, when you put this all together... Go to bullet four. So, for the concept purposes, GHD assumed what we saw on that previous slide, the activated sludge treatment facility with the tesser filtration will be installed under this discharging, the discharges meaning these numbers. So, and also, what I did not discuss is the 1.75. When you look at the report, remember, the facility is under 2B and one, talk about a 1.75 million gallon plant, which is the ultimate desired capacity for the board, including contractual agreements. So, that particular slide, which shows this one here as the 2050 design flows at 1.75, is in the report, but I did not include it here, because you're most interested in the 3A. But it's included, so you can look at it if you want to see what it corresponds to. So, just to create one, this was on the nitrogen side, and this one is on the phosphorus side. So, as you can see, even under the 2050 scenario, the phosphorus is not the challenge, we can definitely perform well below that, so that even the 2050 column would be nowhere near the top, it would be somewhere in, in this range here. The nitrogen is the, is the challenge, because this is the number of, it's not at the technical limit of today, but it's not that much above it, it's about 30% above the technical limit of, of today. So, you know, we want to be, we want to be sure, we can definitely, when you go back to the bullet I had before, the anticipated design of the facility will hit that number, or better. So, it's not, it's, it's not a bleeding-edge technology issue, no, we can, we know we can do that. As a matter of fact, the Rehoboth plant produces that number, you know, like, so, and our inland base plant is very close to that number without tesser, if we add the filters, we know we can promise we can meet that number, and that's important.
Wow.
Talked about that 1.75, and that's, again, I reiterated bullet three, we believe it can be achieved, we believe this is not fuzzy math, this is real. So, so we're looking at the entire series of options evaluated, in the opinion of the county engineer, in the, my dear friend Chairman Panetta, and our, our great engineers, Lee, we believe this is doable. So, otherwise, we wouldn't be here. So, the, the decision is really strictly a decision based on preferences by the board, not what's doable and what's not. The 3D is a little bit interesting, again, we're not including our flows, because other things coming back. This is essentially a mirror image of what we're bidding right now at inland base. We're bidding a, we're bidding a, a wetland facility, a submerged gravel wetland, among other improvements at inland base, which is right now being advertised. And that would essentially change the discharge from a pure horizontal discharge, i.e. pipe or gravity flow, to a vertical discharge with a combination of an overflow, which captures all the stormwater issues. So, this is a, this is an, an option which may be interesting to the public, may be interesting to the Department of Natural Resources, may be interesting to the, to the county council. Then, when we look at the evaluation in the second, you see, it has some benefits in terms of that, but it is, it is, the, that, that option will require other, other investigations beyond that. So, now I want to tell you about the multi-criteria assessment. And when you look at this, we set several categories, we have three categories, each category has subcategories, each subcategory we're assigned weighting factors, and these weighting factors here, longer-term impacts get a higher rating, and lower-term, temporary impacts get a lower rating. So, that's, so if you can see that in the evaluations, why we have higher numbers on certain options and lower ones. So, when you look at, I'm clicking through that relatively quickly, because this is here, the community and environmental impacts. So, again, you see five subcategories, different weighting factors, and you have, the last one is the operation and maintenance, it's very important. Right now, that facility is a relatively complex facility. So, for example, if you went to a spray irrigation system, that's a relatively complex, we know that. A, a tesser treatment one is less complex, especially one which has its canal discharge. So, when you look at the weighting, you see how this all plays into that. So, again, there's different rating factors, a long-term impact versus short-term impacts. So, I modified this a little bit from others, from the slides you've seen the previous week, this is obviously the same, but my write-up changed, and I made some, I made some different points. Give you an example, 3A scores very high on permitting on schedule. There's a relative certainty associated with having a NPDS permit, just like South Coastal, and a discharge. So, so we know what we're working towards, it's a, it's a much easier task, much easier hill to climb. As a matter of fact, just to put it in perspective, it could, the number of the timeline required by us to obtain a permit for South Coastal for the construction and the operation of the facility was measured in months. The effort to obtain, no, the effort to attempt to attain and get a construction and operations permit for inland base is measured in many years, and we're not there yet. So, here's the difference. If you have an outfall and you want to get a permit, it is relatively easy compared to a very complex spray facility.
Would the outfall require any additional public hearings?
Yes.
It would?
We had, we had a public hearing for South Coastal, but there was, it was a non-event, you know?
We had a thousand people for a restaurant last night.
I'm not making any more bad terms.
Hans, if the outfall were ever built, is that BPW?
No, no, we're talking the, I'm talking 3, 3A has the outfall into the canal, as it exists today, as it-
Why, 3A was into the, into the ocean, or?
No, no, that is 2A.
I'm sorry.
2A. Oh, my God, we're not touching 2A.
Okay.
So, that gives you an example, you see here, permitting and schedule under 3A scores well. You can see that permitting and schedule is this, this one here, so this one is, no, wait a second, it was the top version, and it was permitting and schedule is the lower one, yes, it's the lower one. So, this one scores higher than the option 3B because of the certainty associated with it. And the same is true on the opposite community environment impact on 3B, it's a higher score, as you can see, the 50 on 3B, because we're not laying all that pipe, because it doesn't come back. So, that, you can see how, you can see, gives you a little bit of idea how these scores come about. Under the options one and two, they have very similar in overall scores, but the breakdown is very different based on the various aspects, and that's why I said, for example, the option 2C, which is the ocean outfall option, you can see that it scores very low on the permitting and schedule, because it's just a pretty bad problem. So, I'm not going to dwell on this, because this, read here the second line up here, because that's the, the first two lines are really the big evaluation. The first one is, this is a BPW cost, because it is on the BPW side of the handshake. So, when the board looks at this, they look at these cost numbers, and they're made up at the, as you said earlier, capital and operation maintenance. So, it's an all-in cost number, which is, which is being looked at for the different options. And you would say, hey, of course, they're much lower, because we, the county, will have to add the numbers up here, so in the end, that number will be up here. But the question is, for the BPW to decide, they will look at this from their side of the handshake point. So, that's why there's excluded, and will only be developed if either one of the threes is selected. So, moving forward on the next steps, I have had hot off the press news, the tentative is coming off, the date is January 23rd. So, the, the board, and maybe, did one of you want to talk about that?
Because it's really, it's really their step, so maybe I'll... So, as Hans had, Tom Panetta from Lewis BPW, as Hans mentioned, in March, we had a public workshop, and that raised a series of questions. We've gone and done the study, we will be presenting back another workshop on January 23rd at 6:00 PM at the Rollins Center in Lewis, for the public to hear the results of the report, it will be presented by GHD, and, and we'll be there to, to take any questions, and no decisions have been made at this point, and based upon what the public comments are, we'll, we'll then go back and figure out what the next steps are. But the next steps, as Hans pointed out, would be more detailed evaluation of those options that were in final consideration.
And then, maybe speak to the second bullet, Tom, please.
Oh, so, the, this presentation will be before the board tomorrow for acceptance, oh, not acceptance, excuse me, for, yeah, for accepting the report, pending any decision on the public hearing. And then, we will schedule, you know, based upon the public hearing, you know, we'll determine what the next, you know, what the timeframe is for moving forward.
So, I'll speak to the last bullet, and let's just say, before it says, after all the, the next two steps, i.e. the public workshop and the final decision by the board, if the, if the answer is, we would like to engage in the county in, in the three series, so then, at that point, we will have to do a number of things. You want to see the cost developed, so we would then go back to GHD, we've had some preliminary discussions, that being county engineering department and the GHD. So, we would develop that cost associated with building that facility. We would also investigate with DNRCC, we've had some meetings with them already, we'd investigate, and the meetings we had with them were a presentation of the, of the evaluation, not, nothing to do with any selection. But if we had a three series idea, we want to sit down with DNRCC and hear their comments on either 3A or 3B, because, you know, like, they would be the ones permitting that facility. And then, depending- And then, depending on whether it is 3A or 3B, now I'm getting two steps down the rabbit hole, under 3A, because we're committing to discharge on an outgoing tide, additional canal studies have to be performed. If it is 3B, and we'd go in on a vertical discharge, a very detailed series of hydrogeological reports have to be presented at the facility at Wolf Neck. So both of these have two downstream steps, before we can go into a submittal, because our timeline, the clock wouldn't start until we get that stuff back to the department. So if any of the two series were to be presented, the board would have similar issues, where they would have to go into a whole series of, you know, downstream action items. But I just wanted to sort of highlight for you, canal modeling is on the table, because we did commit under the three series to a tidal discharge, and site hydrogeological investigations are on the table, because if you have a vertical discharge, you need a lot of soil information. So that's a, and the potential, I mean, like, I'm also thinking, there could be a potential that you sort of combine some option, because DNRC may come back and say, hey, why didn't you look at, let's call it a hybrid three or a hybrid two series? So that's always on the table, because right now, we did not look at the hybrid. For example, on the two series, you could have a spray/rib option. You can't have a canal/一群 option, that's just, no, that's silly. But you could have a rib/spray option. So, but that was not analyzed. So, that's, how did I do on my timeline here, Mr. Administrator?
Clear as mud. More to come.
More to come, yes, but...
A lot more to come.
I mean, it's exciting, it's great, I mean, that's, I think we are...
And we, I assume we're kind of holding pattern.
We are in a...
Until BPW has their public hearings and makes their decisions, and the board goes to do what we're going to do, they pick an option.
Right. So strangely enough, let me go back a couple of slides, if I may have 60 more seconds. When you look at the operation and maintenance cost estimate for the Lewis Board, we used the Rehoboth model to work up that number, because in the Rehoboth model, and that speaks to how we have the contractual agreement, the county is a partner with the city of Rehoboth on a flow basis, and we contribute to the annual budget of the city of Rehoboth for wastewater treatment and disposal on a percentage basis based on flow. So we used that model, worked it backwards, using the Lewis Board of Public Works user base, and what we believe our user base would be, and then came up with these numbers. So these are real-life experience numbers based on an agreement which is already in place. And so, Mr. Lawson and I will be present at the January 23rd meeting to answer any questions by the public directly directed at us, and with, I guess we speak with your permission, because we're not orchestrating the workshop, but we will be there in case the board wants questions answered by the county directly.
Good. Thank you.
Just two comments?
Yes, sir.
One of the things I wanted to just emphasize for the public is what Hans had mentioned about discharging on the outgoing tide. And that makes a big deal for the health of the canal. Currently, we have very good water quality, but we discharge 24/7. We don't have the space for lagoons at the facility. So the outgoing tide would help to make sure that everything was flushed out of the canal, and, you know, it would improve. The second thing is that I really have to thank county council, Hans and Todd, for all the help up till this point. It has been really, really instrumental in getting us to where we are right now. So, you know, we're standing by also, unfortunately, so...
And that's all part of a partnership.
Yes. So, thank you.
Thank you. You're still up, Mr. Medlors?
Okay, Mr. President, moving into business decisions, starting with the...